Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13's school board meeting for Tuesday, November 28th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Natty, if you would, please read the roll.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Samurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda with adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Yeah, I'll be looking for a motion in a second for the approval of the agenda. We're going to be removing item F. Our presenter is out ill, so with F removed, Molly, motion? Looking for a second.
Second.
Natty, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements: December 12th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, there'll be a school board meeting here in the community room. December 22nd through January 2nd, there's no school, it's a winter break. January 9th at 5:30 PM, there'll be a school board organizational meeting here in the community room. And then also, January 9th at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular school board meeting again here in the community room. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence to discuss this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Communication to the Board: Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Anyone here to address the board? Okay. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. Need a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Lauren, thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is our acknowledgement of contributions. If I give a motion a second, then I'll read it and then open it for discussion. So looking for Molly?
Second.
Holla, thank you. And the resolution is as follows: Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, it be resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $960. The detailed background is as follows: The monetary donations, the following monetary donations were made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program from PEO Chapter EZ $150 and from Janet Vaughn $100. Valuing-kind donations of winter clothing to Highland Elementary by Marge Jubel for student needs, estimated value of $50. And then donations of dictionaries to North Park, Highland, and Valley View Elementary by the Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary Club for third-grade students, estimated value of $660. Our total fiscal year 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date are $6,316.54. Any discussion?
Thanks.
Okay. As always, very appreciative. Hearing no further discussion. Natty, this is a roll call vote, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up would be discussion reports and information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly, would you mind going first tonight?
Sure. It's been a pretty quick two weeks. I think I was able to attend the adapted soccer banquet, a football banquet, and the work session last week. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Natty?
I was also at the football banquet, be able to do the work session last week, and have talked with different members of the community, people on the board.
Yeah, thank you. Holla?
I attended the work session and the TIES Annual Meeting with Kathy and Brian.
Yeah, thank you. Lauren?
All right. I'm not sure, this was since our last meeting, I was not at the last meeting, but I did attend the Taste of the Heights event, and that was really a great event. It was crowded, but it was wonderful to see so many community members all together having a really nice time. So, kudos to the group that put that on, that was an excellent event. Also attended the high school band concert and the high school play Sense and Sensibility. Great concert and play by those groups. Wonderful to see our talented students. And then was at the work session as well.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the band and choir concert over at the high school, and as always, the students just do a really amazing job. It was nice to see a lot of students trying maybe a lot of different types of instruments that they hadn't done before, which I thought showed their versatility and their willingness to go out there and try something new. They worked in smaller ensembles this year because the, one of the high school bands split into two bands, so they were, so you could really hear each one of the students just doing their best out there. It was just really a great show, and the choir was just amazing. I really enjoyed myself. I also attended the work-study session last week, the chair meeting prior to this board meeting here, and had an opportunity to mingle a little bit out there with our new tenured teachers, which we are going to introduce later. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended Taste of Columbia Heights, the band and the choir concert, I did get to see the play. It's always nice to see the results of the kids' hard work in all those events, they did a really nice job. Then I was at the work session last week, and then chair meetings before that and before tonight, so. And that concludes my report. Next up would be the superintendent's report. I assume you have one?
I do. Mr. Chair and members, I would just like to put out a plug for the Columbia Heights eat up the debt. The Columbia Heights Public Schools has created a Give Minnesota page to help offset debt associated with families unable to pay for their National School Lunch Program accounts. And if you're interested in doing that, you can donate at any time by clicking on Give to the Max or on any of our district or school homepages. Thank you in advance if you feel so inclined. I attended the Northeast Metro 916 Superintendent Advisory Meeting, and the focus there was on additional special education resources and support that they can put into the district to help us with our programming, and they also have a very strong professional development program that we are thinking about doing for our EAs this summer, which will help both teachers and EAs who are in level programming with new techniques and strategies. I too attended the Fall Play and the Choir and the Band Concerts, and it was great to see our performing artists display their work. And I want to say a special thanks to all of the staff and students that made that possible, and to the music booster parents who cleaned the tuxes and shirts and sewed all of the hems and fitted everything for the students, they looked beautiful, and it was a lot of work for very few people. Chair Larkin and I met with Director of Finance and Operations Christine Carr and Wells Fargo on the OPEB Trust, and you'll hear more about that later tonight. And Director Carr and I also had a facilities overview from Ed Valley View last week. Thanks for fitting us in on a very busy week. We had a great time with the principal and the staff, looking through the building. And I would like to call special attention tonight, but not really embarrass her, but kind of sort of, Director Xena Stenveg today defended her superintendent work with the superintendent panel, and she passed with flying colors, so she now will be qualified for superintendent's license. How about a round of applause for her performance? Well done. And I too attended the school board work-studies, I had chair meetings, and then I had individual contacts with school board members, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, now onto the fun stuff, so. Next up would be our tenure teacher recognition, and I believe Director Bennett and Stenveg are coming up.
Before we continue, I just want to mention that when I was talking about going to the TIES Annual Meeting, I neglected to mention that Christine Carr was also with us.
Okay. All right. I get your credit, Christine.
Well, the principals and directors are coming up. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it's always one of the exciting times of year when we get to recognize our newly-tenured teachers. This year, I think it's the biggest class I've seen, it's 22 teachers achieved tenure as of July 1st, and 14 came out tonight to celebrate with us. So before we have the principals and directors talk about those staff members, we'll have Xena say a few words, the principals will say a few words, and then I'll call them up to receive their certificates.
So each year in August, before the rest of the staff returns to work, in this room, we host our new teacher induction program, which is a three-day program we call Scaling the Heights. During those three days, we really overload them with too much information, how to find their curriculum, how to enroll in benefits, how to log on to their computer, and of course, where to find the copy machine. They are really wholeheartedly welcomed into this community, partly through a bus tour that we take, and we stop at places like Heights Theater and have lunch at Mersham Hall. So tonight, it's really great to see those teachers here again in this room, to be recognized for achieving tenure for Columbia Heights Public Schools. They really are all outstanding teachers, strong advocates for our children, and they exemplify Heights pride.
I guess I can start. I'm going to talk about Megan Solgren, who's not here tonight, but she is an early childhood special education teacher, and she actually was tenured with the district back before 2011, left, moved out of state, and returned back to us, so that says a lot about how much she loves it here at Heights, so we're happy to have her back and tenured back in the district.
Good evening. I'm honored to acknowledge tenured Stephanie Fortner, our pre-K4 teacher, and she works with our four-year-old scholars. There is not, I was saying earlier this evening, there is not an inch of space in her classroom nor a second during the learning day that isn't enriched, and especially in literacy, we've all learned so much from her, and she's just a stupendous teacher, and we're so proud to have her.
And then at Valley View, I have a wonderful crew that I've been very fortunate to inherit and hopefully can keep them till the end of my career because they're that valuable, and they have servant leadership at the core of everything they do. Ms. Berg is a strong campus leader who through her actions is providing wonderful experiences for her students as well as her team. Ms. Bazanz, our social worker, is a champion of every kid that walks through our doors, and we're very proud to have her be that champion. Ms. Coleman, who is the patience of a saint working with our kindergarten students, is seeing their transformation, she cares for them like they're their own. Ms. Cronin, who has the patience and calming influence for all of her teammates as well as her kids, and as well as treating them and wants to do what's best for each child. Ms. Hanson is the forever optimist, the glass is always half-full and is always reflecting on what she can do to get more out of the kids, and it's, I know the kids feel very fortunate to be in her room as well. Ms. Mead, who treats every first grader like they're her own, and she takes them home every night, you'd think they have that kind of relationships, we're very fortunate to have her. And of course, I'm going to bring on Ms. Fortner as well because she's at Valley View, and she's not just a pre-K teacher, but she's a really important leader on the campus as well, and so I feel very fortunate to work with those group of tenured teachers.
All right, good eve, oop. Go to this one.
Good evening. I'm here to represent Highland Teachers and a district-wide as well as a peer reviewer. So I'm going to start with Carrie Trenyan Yan is a district-wide, or I should say, a pre-K and elementary-wide peer reviewer. Carrie is a vital, serves a vital role between all three elementary schools as she works with every teacher pre-K through grade two. So she provides them with coaching and support on their individual growth and development plans and helps, encourages the teachers to work on their goals and to work on student engagement. So she serves a very vital role for all of us. And the second teacher that's also in attendance with us tonight is Ms. Stephanie Ottnis, and she is a special education teacher at Highland. She's, again, serves multiple roles. She's currently our Level III autism teacher, working with kindergarten through grade two. She was a former EBD teacher at Highland, that's where she started. She also serves as one of our encore facilitators, so she's very engaged with our school and our students at Highland. I have a few teachers that were not able to make it tonight. The next is Ms. Katie Munson, and she is currently a Spanish teacher. She was a Spanish teacher to start at Highland and then filled in last year. We were short right before school started for a grade-one teacher, so she graciously accepted that position, and we were able to have a teacher in place for open house. And she's an exemplary Spanish teacher, really goes the extra mile for students. And next is Ms. Samantha Willam Strobusch. She's a fourth-grade teacher at Highland, was hired as a fourth-grade teacher, stayed there, really one of our main or our key avid teachers in the second or the intermediate level at Highland. Really, it's a strong team and a strong force helping avid be successfully rolled out at Highland. Next is Ms. Leah Ambrose, and she started in our district as a speech-language clinician shared between Columbia Heights High School and North Park, and this year has moved over to Highland as our speech clinician. She serves students at Highland, pre-K, and Immaculate Conception. And again, we're just so thrilled to have her join our team.
Good evening, everyone. I have the good fortune to speak about three of our tenured teachers at North Park. First is our social worker, Kim Wicker. Kim is just an incredibly steadying influence for everyone, and her mental health support for children really makes an enormous difference and has since the day she walked in the door. And we also have Jen Bradley, who is an EL teacher in grades two and three this year, has worked in grades two and three for her tenure at North Park. She, it's kind of like the Pied Piper, kids follow her everywhere. She's, she makes amazing relationships with students, and they carry over to trusting relationships with families. And then finally, in attendance with us tonight is Becky Bowe. Becky trained in our second-grade learning studio, and then she kind of helped with the reboot of the third-grade studio. Becky is a teacher who embraces the principles of 21st century skill-building. She is an innovator, she's creative, and she's become an indispensable leader. She's the type of teacher that any building would feel fortunate to have, and so thank you to all of them.
I also have three teachers from Columbia Academy that I'd like to talk briefly about. First of all, Michael Howe. Mike Howe is with us tonight as representing both a social studies teacher, also a football coach, and takes care of our behavior rooms. So that means if they haven't been naughty enough to see me, they see Mr. Howe. That's going to be a tough position, but our kids love Mr. Howe. Lindsay Camp, Lindsay, we have given Lindsay our pilot projects. This is the second one now that she's working on. We've given to her because we trust that she's going to do that with great seriousness, she's going to put everything into it, and we will get honest feedback from her on whether it's working. And so, very appreciative of her taking on these tasks pretty much by herself in both cases. She had a one-room classroom, and now she is doing our math intervention for sixth-grade pilot project. Miss student, Hannah Student, who is a social studies teacher. She has been with us now for three years, and I told her that seems like much longer than that. She has left a big impact, she is also an avid teacher for us, does amazing work, loves our kids, they love her too.
I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Robleski, and I'm filling in for him to talk about three teachers that we have. I'm going to start with Natasha Olabaju because she's not here right now. She loved being observed so much that I observed her this year, and she's already tenured, so. And she did fantastic work, her, the internet was down, and she just went on and did a fantastic job. The next person who lives his job, practices as I do as well, and the reason why he's here alone and he doesn't have representation is because he rides his bike every day. He's an environmental science teacher, and his name is Zach Johnson. He couldn't fit his family, he has a brand-new baby on the back of it, it's a little chilly for him, so, great job, Zach. And then, the next person who I had a great opportunity to come and observe him many times. I went to Gustavus, and we had an art teacher that was phenomenal in the state of Minnesota, Dr. Granland, and he has statues all over the world. And I look at our art teachers' work, and it's phenomenal, and it reminded me a lot of that, and that person is Dean Hodges, and so we welcome him aboard as well.
So those in attendance tonight, we'd like to have them come up and get a certificate, shake the board's hand and get a picture with Chair Larkin, so when I call their name, if they could come up. The first one in attendance is Michael Howe with Columbia Academy.
Sami's not here. She's dead. She had a fight. She had a fight.
Next, we have Lindsay Camp with Columbia Academy.
Thank you.
And the third one from Columbia Academy, Hannah Student. And then we have district-wide Carrie Trenyan Yan. And then for the high school, first up, Dean Hodges. And then for the high school, first up, Dean Hodges. And next, we have from the high school, Zach Johnson. And then from Highland, we have Stephanie Ottnis. And then from North Park, Becky Bowe. And then Valley View, we have Danielle Burke. Also from Valley View, Stephanie Bazanz. And last but not least, Stephanie Fortner with Valley View. And again, we just want to thank everybody.
Give the board an opportunity, anybody have anything they'd like to say to all of our newly-tenured teachers?
I hope I get to hand them a 20-year pin.
The bell, we'll look for that, so, well, I don't know, I won't be around for that, but congratulations. Now, this is that awkward moment where everybody goes, what do we do now? I told a couple of you, I'd give you that subtle hint, and that is, as long as you all agree to meet with Casey out there for a picture, now is the best time to run, so. Congratulations. And a bit of a tough act to follow, but, next in the room, the Taco Heaven, there they go.
So, should we tell them that if they don't take a picture with Casey, we withdraw their tenure?
I told them I'd come back and sit through the meeting, so that'd probably be worse.
I don't know.
Probably going to have to shut those doors for a little bit, huh?
I wonder if we went out there and we flapped our pants, if they would all stop.
Whenever you're ready, Christine.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this evening, we have Merle Waters here from Wells Fargo Bank. He's here to present the annual update on the OPEB Trust, was created in around 2009 by the school board with assets to support post-retirement benefits for some qualified employees within the district. So Merle, we review the investments at this time.
Thank you, Director Carr. You should have a hard copy as well, I apologize, it's a little bit difficult to read on the overhead, but I'll flip through as we go through as well. And so, we will start with, and the page numbers are in the lower-left, except for this first page, it's a summary page of the 13 districts that we work with with regards to managing the OPEB Trust. And if we go down, just to get a little history for those that are new or newer to the board, if we go to the Columbia Heights line item or row of information, so you see the original funding value there at just over $4.5 million, the current value at about $5.2 million, and I should say that's as of the end of September, we're actually up another maybe $150,000 from there currently through yesterday, so about $5.2 million at the end of September. Contributions that have been made after the original funding, about $1.1 million. The distributions from the OPEB Trust of about $2.9 million. There are distributions that are made annually from the trust, once per year, so $2.9 million in distributions, with an investment gain then again at the end of September of about $2.4 million, that's more like $2.6 million at this point. May 22nd, 2009, so about eight and a half years ago, was the date of the, that's when we very first started investing funds within the trust. And then in this gray or the yellow-shaded columns to the right, those reflect the specific targets that we have for the amount that we can invest in fixed income, equities, and then more of a broad asset class that we refer to as complementary investments or real assets. And there is actually a written document that we've executed that speaks to or that documents those targets that we have, it speaks to the ranges around those targets that we can modify at points in time in the marketplace as well. Just some summary information there. Specifically to- Specifically to investments within the trust, and I should back up just a moment, statute 356A is what allows, or what governs the management of the trust, and it does allow for, again, the equity investments, and other types of investments that we have. And this page speaks specifically to that, the pie chart on the lower-right-hand corner, again, that ties back to that yellow-shaded box that we looked at, the investment targets that we have for each of the categories. On the left-hand side, the pie chart on the left-hand side gives you the current allocations, again, as of September 30th, and you can see that we're basically right in line with all of the targets. We've actually sold equities a couple of times this year, and rebalanced back to targets as equities have appreciated. And then the box in the middle, again, it's hard to read on the screen, but in the hard copies, that's labeled "alternative investments," those are the more unique investments that are within the trust, again, permissible with statute 356A. And the one that's the, probably the most unique, is the middle one, the third one down from the top, it's called the Principal Enhanced Property Fund, that's actually a commercial real estate fund, it's a private fund, it's about 45 different properties all here in the US, it's very good returns, nice dividend yield, so, again, that's an example of what 356A is allowing you to do, is to invest in investments like that. The receipt disbursement history, I mentioned earlier, that the pattern has been to take an annual distribution, so this is just, again, listing the original funding contributions, and then the distributions, the dates, the amounts. And ultimately, what we arrive at with here, what we're trying to do here, is rather than speaking so much in percentage rates of return, we're putting this actually in dollars, so the gray-shaded box in the lower-right actually gives you, or shows you about $2.4 million, again, that's closer to $2.6 million today, so that's the investment gain in the portfolio. And then, we will spend just a moment on percentage rates of return, and I'm going to focus at the very bottom of this, it's a very busy slide, but if we look at the last 12-month column, so just a bit to the right of the middle at the bottom, you can see that the rate of return, and I'm just, again, speaking to this, to the last 12 months, September to September, 8.4% net of fees, and again, that's for the total portfolio, if we look at the fixed income returns right below that, about 1.69%, so very modest rates of return, and I think we all know, interest rates continue to be at historic lows, so bond returns are very modest. But then, on the top of the next page, I'm on page seven, you can see the equity number there, at just under 20% for the trailing 12 months, so it's been a, it's been a very good market for equities, and then the other categories are listed below there as well, so. Any questions, just allocation performance? I want to spend just a moment, we get a lot of questions today, the upper-left-hand graph that we're showing on this page here, so where are we today? The market is at a record high, and in fact, we closed at a record high today, again, the US market was up 1% alone today on optimism for tax, the tax bill actually making it through Congress. What's somewhat odd about the market today, is you see the graph right below that, market is up, there's a lot of angst today, just with the geopolitical issues, and just the issues here in the United States, but below that, you can see the volatility is actually low, and in fact, on the next page, on page 10, this is showing, or just graphing volatility, so the amount of up and down in the market, is really at about a 20-year low today, so an odd situation. I mentioned all of the angst that exists today, the concern about the market being high, and are we going to repeat something like the early 2000s, or even '07, '08. It's important to keep in mind that there's always something to worry about, and that's what this slide is showing, is if you go back to 1965, this covers everything from the Vietnam War, the Iraq War, seven recessions, the financial crisis, 9/11, and as you can see, the market doesn't go straight up, but generally, over time, the trend is certainly higher. So I think that's part of what my message is tonight, is even though we're at all-time highs, and it feels uncomfortable, this market could continue to go higher. One other comment to make, just with regards to volatility, what this slide is showing is the blue bar showing the annual increase in the market, and the gray diamond below that shows the decline during that particular year, so even in 2016, where you see the market up 12% during the year, there was actually a 10% correction, so, that's perhaps message too, that even though we think the market is high, we believe it will, the returns in 2018 will be modest, we do also expect a correction along the way here, and we talked about that, I think we mentioned, we had a meeting last week, and our message is, is modest returns, expect a correction, but probably a fairly quick recovery from that correction that we would have. Actually, we typically have a correction of 10% or more every 11 months, and we have to go back to early 2016 at this point, so it likely is coming. I'm gonna skip over a couple here, and perhaps the most obvious question that somebody would ask, if we think the market's high, that there's risk in the market, is why not, why not take some, sell some equities, take some risk off the table, and what this is showing, and this goes back to 1989, so 27 years of data, looking at returns of the US market, and if you would've stayed fully invested over that entire period of time, so, two periods there where we had 50% declines in the equity markets, early 2000, and again, in '07 and '08, if you would've held that portfolio, your returns annualized per year would've been 7.74%, and if you go to the far right of this, if you missed, you tried to be out of the market, and you missed the 50 best days over about 6,700 trading days, your return is actually slightly negative. And what's even more impressive, actually, is if you miss the 10 best days, your return drops by about 2.5 percentage points per year, over that entire timeframe, so, I'm maybe beating the topic a little bit too much, but I think the point is that, because, again, it's a great question, is, market's at a high, you know, there's concerns about the market being at a high, but at this point, you know, our strategy is to stay the course, you have 40% of the portfolio that's in very high-quality fixed-income securities, so, I think we have the right strategy in place. With that, I'll ask for any questions, comments? Questions or comments?
Just did that quick math, that's just under 10,000 days, so 50 days matter most out of, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's crazy.
A good example of that is, and I don't mean to keep going with time here, but a good example of that is, was the Brexit vote, when Britain voted to withdraw from the EU on that Friday, the market was down 5% the following Monday, about 4%, 4.5%, but by the end of the day, it had closed up, and by the end of that week, it was back even with where it was the prior Thursday, so 10 percentage points down and right back up, so. If you missed that, if you sold Thursday night, or Friday, you missed some of that recovery, so.
Anyone else, questions or comments?
Thanks for coming on tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Next up would be the building vision card for Columbia Academy, Principal Burkus.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Burkus and I are here to present the Columbia Academy Vision Card for 2016-17 school year. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Principal Burkus.
Thank you. So, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thank you for letting me come and talk about Columbia Academy, and I think the first line there, create worlds of opportunity for every learner, defines what we do every day, and with our core values, some of those are in "rise up," others aren't listed there, but the one that caught my eye this evening when I came, "community," it's about all of us, all of the time, and I love the word "all" in both of those phrases, so. So, just some data at the start, then I'll talk more about the school itself, but as you can see, our enrollment since 2012 has, other than dipping in 2013, has steadily climbed. The 2018 school year, this current school year, we are at 812 students, so, that has meant running out of lockers, and having to find them, stealing desks from the high school, and all sorts of other things to make room for that many kids, but, as far as we can tell from just talking to people, that's a number that's probably not been that high for many, many years, and so, a lot of great things that come with that. We're proud of our kids, it's great to have full hallways, and classrooms, and activities, but we are at 812, so we are at, we are definitely at capacity. We have, our enrollment demographics, as you can see, we remain a very diverse school, we have a lot of students from a lot of different parts of the world, different languages, different parts of our country, representing different ethnic groups, and again, all one community. Our free reduced lunch rate, at 82.5% is, has been about there for a while now, just over 80%, we do have almost 20% English learners, and 4% homeless, while that sounds like a small number, that is actually one of the higher numbers for a middle school that I could see from around this area. So, a lot of people that are hurting, that we also serve. So, as you know, we do have our vision card, and I'm sorry that it's always hard to read, but I'll just go through and highlight a few of them. We do have, as you can see, I think, fairly high level of implementation of things like our standard-based curriculum, our PLCs, this year, we have implemented for the first time at the middle school, common prep for our core subjects. That allows all of our math teachers, social studies teachers, science teachers, English teachers, to meet together on a weekly basis, and we feel that that's huge, to give that right in their working day, they have 90 minutes to do that. Use of formative assessment, that's to guide instruction, again, high, and we believe very strongly that that's a helpful thing for us to do. Effective teaching strategies, I'm very proud of the teachers that we have at Columbia Academy, when I go through our building and watch them teach, we've got some very talented teachers there, lots of them. The classroom embedded 21st-century learning, we are a one-to-one school, so we're proud to be able to have all students access computers. Like all people, I think we are learning what it means to be a 21st-century school, and so, we continue to work on that, but we are using those computers more and more in all of our classes. Again, and evaluating teachers, we are proud, as you saw again tonight, some great people that we have working at Columbia Academy. Multi-tier interventions, we talked about an intervention today, we do believe strongly that there are students that need more than just the classroom experience that every other student gets, they need another dose, they need something perhaps in a smaller group, and so, we work hard to do that for reading and math, we do that also for behavior in the next one, where we are working to provide students with extra support if they need that in order to perform in our classrooms. And then finally, STEAM, or STEM, our engineering, we do only run engineering as an elective at this time, it's not an integrated program across the building, but as we talked about in our last board meeting, we have moved to Project Lead the Way, which is a national, highly reputable engineering program, very rigorous, and we're proud to have that now at Columbia Academy as well. So, test scores, we remained concerned, we remain, this remains our great challenge, it remains something that we work for every day, we are working, and as you can see, in reading, math, and science, in all, we're at a level where it is something that that's what we have to do. If you break that down, obviously, by different groups, that number changes a great deal, but if you take it in aggregate, you see that we do have, we do have a lot of work, and we continue to work hard on that. So, what does that mean then, though, for this year? First and foremost, we are looking to continue to improve, so a 5% increase in MCA reading, we feel is something that is a stretch challenge, but a doable one, and so, that's what we will work for. We have the same for math, and we have the same for science as well, so we are shooting for that 5% increase, which we feel is, again, one of those goals, it's realistic, but it will push us to continue to work to find new strategies to be more effective. In addition to that, though, we have added our own goals, one of those is that 100% of our classrooms will have a culture of academics, I'm going to define that and talk quite a bit about that in just a moment, but we are expecting all of our classrooms, to be able to guarantee parents that if you come to Columbia Academy, your child is going to go from classroom to classroom, and each one of those classrooms is going to have a culture of academics, in other words, it's going to work for your child, you will be happy to have them in that class. And then, that's a more measurable goal, we believe that grades are, in some ways, a better predictor than test scores even, of whether kids have what it takes to be successful in high school and beyond. Grades include a measure of, at Columbia Academy at least, of what is your daily routine, what is your discipline like, what is your effort like? That does not always show up in a test score, but it does usually show up in a grade, and so, we really push for students to be on the honor roll, because we do believe it reflects that you are performing well, and that you are building the life skills that are needed to be successful in school. So, if I may, I'm going to talk just briefly tonight about what we're trying to do at Columbia Academy, and that is to build a culture of academics, so we talk about this explicitly, been talking about this with our staff now for about two-and-a-half years. When we talk about that, the first thing that we talk about, at the base of that, is relationships, and so, while that sounds very basic, as we look at it across our building, we have taken a motto, as we have in other areas as well, of talking about the Columbia Academy, where we all belong. We believe that one of the most important things for kids, when they walk into a school, is that they do not see themselves as somehow outside of that community, but an integral part of that community. So, they belong there, that's a word that we want them to hear, it's a feeling that they want, that we want them to have, something that they believe. So we have that as a big sign when they walk in the door, we put it on our doors as well, we talk about our uniforms, and how our uniforms, just like the Vikings, make, help make them a team, our uniforms at Columbia Academy help us be a team, so, but those relationships need to be then developed between teachers and students, and that's key for us, and especially at a middle school, kids are so tuned in to each other, how do you get them tuned in to adults? And so, the only way we can really get work done is to develop strong relationships with them, and I believe our staff do that in so many different ways, whether that's playing basketball at 6:30 in the morning with them, or it's talking to them in the doorway of their classroom, you see it. And I think one of the big things that has been, people ask me, "What do you think, being a principal at a middle school?" I think one of the biggest things is that you, the energy level that runs through a middle school is always just amazing, and the smiling faces, the laughter, the joy that goes through so many kids as you walk down the hallway, is something that just, you just can't miss it. It's there, it's continuous, it's reliable. Our kids, we love them, they're happy as far as, you know, finding their friends, there is a, there's a community that's building in Columbia Academy that we're proud of, and that doesn't mean there's sad days, it doesn't mean that there are things that happen, but there is a community of students, and there's a community that's building, and you see that, and it's one of the first things, I think, that is very obvious as you go through our building, and that's between our kids, and also between us and adults. At the base of any tree is, you know, the roots, if the roots are the relationship, that base, we feel like, that is so important for a tree, for a school, that base is behavior. It is step one, after your relationships are built, what next? Well, we do have to have behavior that does not get in the way of learning, so we've made a big deal about that, and we've talked about that, we talk about the CA way, the CA way to rise up, we've talked about that explicitly with students, every teacher has this in their classroom, so that they know, what do we expect? And we say, "You need to rise up," we're talking about broad values, but we're also talking about specific actions. So, we also want kids to strive, to be the best they can be, so we have done that through honoring students for rising up, we do that through, again, having this our motto, and talk about kids, so if I go up to a classroom that has a substitute teacher for their last period of the day, I'm saying, "Guys, we gotta rise up here, okay?" And they know what we mean, I don't have to get into a long speech about what we expect, they know what that means if they need to rise up. And so, with that, though, with behavior, we've also started this year to talk about the Big Five, and if you go on a safari, I guess the Big Five is heaven, but if you go, you want to see these five big animals, and when I go on my own safari around the building, in each classroom... And when I go on my own safari around the building, in each classroom, I am looking for these five things. So, threshold means that our teachers are greeting every student by name when they come through the door of their classroom, so every kid is acknowledged. That every classroom starts quietly, silently, students are doing their work, it's established, it goes from one classroom to the next, every classroom is doing this so that we have a very, we bring students down, we establish the academic tone of the bill, of the classroom, we review, but this is a silent individual activity in each building for that strong start. Our routines are absolutely essential, they give us more time, they keep kids from misbehaving. Hundred percent means that we expect a hundred percent adherence to our expectations, a hundred percent of the time. Well, that doesn't always work, obviously, but what we do talk about with our teachers is that catch it early. If you're going to catch it, don't wait till it's so big you have to send them to the principal. Catch it early, send them to Mr. Howell, so that they can come back and they can get back to work. And then the last thing, probably the most important, we talk at length, and our teachers are great at this, that they are warm, but that they are also strict, and by strict, we mean that they're not mean, but that they are looking for students to rise up, that we have high expectations, and you are going to hold them to those high expectations, that includes their behavior. So, finally, with behavior, like so many places, we do have to be aware, and we do have to combat bullying, and we do, we take it very seriously. We ask that our students report it, we ask that our teachers report it, we ask that parents report it, so that we can address it. So, we do talk about anti-bullying in our first three weeks of school, we have a full week session on raising your hand against bullying, and throughout the school year, we will continue to touch on that at certain points in the school year. We do a lot in this to prevent it. The internet has made things accessible, but unfortunately, it also means that kids, that bullying can happen twenty-four seven, and oftentimes, the bullying that we're addressing is bullying that has happened online over the weekend. And so, it's not always bullying that happens in school, it's bullying that happens through, you know, phones and through being able to communicate with people at three-thirty in the morning, if unfortunately, if that's what's going on. So, we address it, and we take care of it when we find it. So, if you can establish relationships and behavior, then you are going to be a lot more successful in reaching that trunk of the tree and the branches, which are both the knowledge and literacy piece. So, we are very much focused on those two, we believe that knowledge is the foundation for literacy, it's the foundation for high-level thinking, it's the foundation for being able to be successful. It is important, we need to make sure that our students know, that they are aware, that they are not ignorant of important things in the world, and that with that, their literacy will grow. One of the best programs that we have to do that is Avid, and I find it very reassuring for me as a principal to know that we are tapped into with the help of teaching and learning, a program that will make sure that our building knowledge and literacy skills is aligned to a college readiness level. So, when we talk about literacy in particular and building knowledge, it's a symbiotic relationship, one builds the other, but that means at our school, we talk about reading in every block that you go to. So, there is no point in the school day where there should not be a literacy component. Every part of your day, no matter where you go, needs to include that because it is so vital to our success. So, finally, if we do all of those things, if we focus on doing those things, our hope is, there are so many other things to do, but our hope is by focusing on these things, we can establish a culture of academics. And with that, what do we see then? Engaged classrooms, rigorous standards, a rich curriculum, many, many after-school activities, our day begins at six-thirty most days in the morning at Columbia Academy, and our last students are usually leaving about quarter to six in the evening. It goes and goes, before and after school, it's not just the school day. And then we have a culture of academics that, where our teachers communicate again and again to our students that we believe in you, we believe in you, we will give a fresh start to you if you need it, we believe in you, is, we cannot say that enough to middle school students. So, hopefully, we're bearing fruit, and by bearing fruit, obviously, we'd like to see that tree full of apples, and I think it will be, but here are some highlights, the robotics state tournament, two years in a row, we've had teams, they're there, five nights a week late, they want to come in this Saturday and prepare their gung-ho, our robotics team. History Day, we also, large number of students participating, this is all of the students that have made it to our section finals, and we've been in the state tournament two years in a row as well there. Very robust band program, they don't even fit all on the stage anymore, so we're happy to, an amazing director, proud of our band program. Our fall musical coming up in December, some great productions, looking forward to another one, invite you to that this year as well. Our vigil and digital art, if you haven't been up our hallways, it's kind of like walking up a middle school museum, we have amazing artists in our room, our building, art teachers as well. And finally, quarter one honor roll, sixty-five percent of our students, and we're proud of that. Again, we believe that grades mean a great deal about how kids are doing in school. So, in closing, that guy with the big beard and helmet, I kind of feel like him someday. We went on a field trip, and there was one of those multi-pedal, and so each of those kids is pedaling, and you can see, they're pedaling like crazy, laughing, and the guy there was just trying to make sure it doesn't, you know, all tip over, and I feel like that sometimes. Put on your helmet and steer the bus, so much energy, but when you do that, there are also these amazing moments where students who don't speak each other's language, who don't speak much English, become friends and buddies and partners and help each other, and that includes, I think, when we talk about rising up, I'm watching students help each other do that, and so it's that collaborative spirit of our building. I'm proud to be part of Columbia Academy, I believe there's a lot of great things happening there, and we want to nurture that culture of academics.
Questions and our comments?
I have a comment, I just, I, obviously looking at the full report card, a lot of great things going on, definitely some, some areas that we need to grow, but I just wanted to thank you for your passion and dedication to our students, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would echo that and just encourage you to, you know, pass that on to the teachers as well, we see it, we see their dedication to the students, and, you know, it is not always an easy task, and we know that, but they're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, and I just think the level of joy and happiness and camaraderie that I hear from the kids, not just my own kids, but other kids that they hang out with, and even that I talk to, they, you know, they know me as so-and-so's mom, I don't think we're supposed to be my kids, right? So-and-so's mom, and it's awesome to hear what's going on and what they're excited about.
Just building a little bit on Lori, and we've seen the whole report, test scores, we see them out there, we know you recognize, and they're working towards that, but personally, what I can say is, is that I'm glad that in addition to that, you're recognizing life skills that are important to be successful, and that it's not all focused around the scores. Those need to improve, obviously, and you're aware of that, but there's a bigger piece to raising our children and recognizing and developing the life skills, placing emphasis on honor rolls and things like that, recognizing while building on those other things, I think that's important that we focus to keep our kids going in the right direction, so thank you for having that holistic look at what you're doing with the kids at the middle school, so.
And I love the strategy of sending, sorry, where are you going to talk? I love the strategy of sending home the grade reports, and they came home tonight, so we're able to see that, and parents can track how their kids are doing, so parents, if you're watching, make sure you're up on that, make sure you're looking at their binders and signing those things, so you know how it's going, and you can start early in the quarter, it's been helpful to me to know what's going on, so.
And I, excuse me, I really have a great appreciation for starting with the relationships, because until you, until you access and create appropriate relationships with the students, you're not going to get anywhere with them, and we can talk academics till the morning, but if we don't use relationships first, from between adults and students and students to students, nothing, nothing good can happen, so I really appreciate starting at that place.
It's so true, if you, if you try to jump over that, you, you gotta go back, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we'll be skipping item F, moving to G, which is the alignment of required district plans.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this evening, I'm here with an informational update, not a governance question, to cover and provide information on district alignment work. So, of course, part of this alignment will help us to achieve worlds of opportunity for every learner, and really focusing on that district-wide collaboration and excellence. So, when I talk about plan alignment, district plan alignment, it's very messy, right? We're required to complete a lot of different compliance reports, whether it be for local, state level, federal level, all different kinds of reports, and what I've noticed in the last few years, human nature, if you have too many reports and compliance reports and goals and all of these different pieces, a lot of times, it's hard to focus on what we need to focus on, right? And a lot of these really well-crafted, important plans might end up in a binder on somebody's shelf. So, in order to take all of these pieces, I began presenting this idea last spring to principals and some of the management team as well, and the idea is, can we have one plan that could meet all of the required components and be an actual acting living document? Meaning, when I, you know, call principals together or other people together to say, you have to comply with this report and fill out this data sheet, can we just do that at one time and really know what our goals are and what our benchmarks are? So, what we did is put together some of the big rocks that we, that we really need to comply with, right? So, college and career readiness, equity and closing those opportunity gaps, academic achievement, technology integration, parent involvement, behavior, culture, climate, kindergarten readiness, and graduation rate. A lot of these items you'll see on the World's Best Workforce, which of course is the 2013 statute, that really, the Department of Education, everything is revolving underneath the umbrella of the world's best workforce, right? So, we're aligning all of our programs to the world's best workforce. So, you'll see those five goals in here, but also our levy for technology integration, all important in our district, and some of these, such as academic achievement and college and career readiness, we do that in pre-K all the way up through twelfth grade. Now, graduation rate, while we're working towards that in kindergarten, it's really, the high school's really focused on that, and kindergarten readiness, the pre-K folks and the kindergarten teachers are really focused on that, but some of them run through everything, right? We all want that culture and climate of academics that Principal Burkus just spoke about. There's eight things on the screen, eight is still too many, right? So, can we boil it down to five goals? Five might be too many, but five goals, that can encompass all of those different plans and all of those different required areas. So, as, I'm going to show you some of the examples of what we've done, I know we're approaching the work on the strategic plan and our expiring strategic plan, and really wanted to share with the board some of the groundwork that we've been working on around academics and some of the plans to really streamline what's already on the plate, that big messy slide that you saw earlier. So, through the Department of Education, they trained us on what's called implementation science. We're not required to use implementation science, however, implementation science is very comprehensive and drills down deep. So, that consists of comprehensive needs assessments, reviewing data, and then not just looking at the data and admiring the data, but really understanding what are the priorities, and then training folks on what are the, how to determine what the root causes are, developing an action plan, SMART goals, actually true SMART goals. So, every year, the title plans are due, the federal title plans are due September first, that we submit to the state of Minnesota. So, during that time, we have all of the schools in this room, along with parents representing each school, teachers, school leaders, and district folks, and so why not capitalize on the fact that we have that captive audience and not only focus on the one plan, but create a bigger plan when we have everyone there, get that community and parent input at the same time, and cover a lot of different bases. So, I'm going to show you, you can see they're all linked here at the bottom, but I'll show you an example from Highland. So, instead of just creating the one plan on this one day, and then, like I said, putting it on the shelf, we decided, this is part of what we, the information that we provided to Highland, we've got lots of other leaders in the district, other leadership teams, right? So, for our teaching and learning leadership last spring, giving them this activity, it's really a sorting, sorting activity, what are some of the big rocks that we're working on, as you can see, life skills, AVID, family engagement, how can you, as the Highland team, see those big important things falling under the big five goals that we are introducing? So, they worked on that. Then we did the same activity with the district equity leadership team, representatives from each school. Then we did the same activity again with the district AVID vertical team, so that's kindergarten through high school. We did that again in the spring with district responsive classroom leadership team, so principals are at this, and they're hearing the same message, all of the different leadership teams across the district are hearing the same message. So then, when we had everyone together here in August for the title meetings, they began creating the plans, so we provided templates for them, the data, and really, the principal took on the facilitator role, they really owned this plan creation, it's their school's plan, and then the teaching and learning staff were the support. So, I'm just going to show you the literacy example, looking at the data, really asking questions, what types of data are you looking at, what are all the different sources, and, you know, we provided them with as much data as possible, what did you learn? Have a conversation with your parents at the table, with different teachers and the principals and deans and APs, what are your next steps? Then, what are the successes based on the data that you just reviewed? What are the concerns, prioritized concerns? What do you think are the hypothesized root causes for some of the concerns? And then develop an action plan for how to address those concerns by using a SMART goal. Action plan includes different steps, right? How do the drivers inform what the team will do, what's your, what are your expected outcomes, when will you review this again, and then what evidence will you look for? So, what are those benchmarks for the goals? I took the names off of the folks who participated, but we had different folks participate from each school, and then this same process was completed for the math goal, the equity goal, the social-emotional learning goal, and the technology goal as well. So, we use the symbol in teaching and learning for our leadership teams and our lead and learn team, so really, when our district administration come together, they're, oftentimes, the fish in the middle, the orange fish in the middle, they're learning, and then the expectation is that they go back to their schools and they're leading the work. So, we use the symbol of learning and leading, learning and leading frequently. So, teaching, the Department of Teaching and Learning isn't just telling the schools, now you all have to make some goals as well. We said, no, we're going to model and do goals as well and show you what our goals are. So, literacy, ensuring that pre-K through twelfth-grade students are guaranteed grade-level standards through providing comprehensive and inclusive literacy curriculum, and professional development that's organized, aligned, includes intervention, extension, and critical reading strategies. So, that's a lot, but as you know, we've had a very sharp focus on literacy instruction in the district, and so we have developed some benchmarks to check in on those pieces in different ways to measure. Sorry about all the moving. Math, same thing, really, this year with math, looking at creating and calibrating assessments, so that means common assessments across, math teachers working together to calibrate those assessments, and we're training them on how to do that. Social-emotional learning, we are, use the CASL framework, as so does the Department of Education, we're waiting for those indicators to be released, hopefully in January. And then equity, ensuring that pre-K through twelfth-grade students are guaranteed access to grade-level standards through providing comprehensive, inclusive curriculum, and then professional development for staff that's focused on that mindset and skill set with an equity lens. And then working with our technology department to create, co-create goals using the SAMR grid, so that's the articulation of technology integration, to look at to look at consistent and intentional use of technology. So, we asked them then, so the goals were submitted and approved great in September 1st. Well, I don't want goals to sit on the shelf, so I come back and I nag at the administration, right? So, bring them back and say, I said, "Okay, now you're all in the room again. Can you make a poster of your, of your goals? Take this time, take this space, make a big poster, and go put it in your staff lounge, put it in your staff meeting room, and talk with your staff about it." So, each of the programs articulated their goals on a big poster, right? And we had conversations around it. The high school, I think, was hungry that night. They made a pizza. But we also gave them homework. So, remember that fish learner and leader? So, now you were kind of the learner. We were talking about your goals again. Now, go lead the work back at your school and ask your grade-level teams, ask your department teams. So, like the high school math team, how do you connect with all five of the goals? And then we used an avid strategy of making an avid one-pager. And then, at our next meeting, bring them back and showcase them. Well, lo and behold, early childhood came back. Their team talked about how they can connect with all five of those goal areas. I just have a few examples because our teachers are so creative and collaborative with one another. So, how can, you know, putting their own goals on there in second grade? Look at this, North Park 5th grade team, putting all their goals out there. Highland, the kindergarten, perfect handwriting, right? I wish I had that. Second grade. Middle school, science and engineering, social studies. Even math got created, which is creative, which is exciting. EL department, English learner, or, and then the English department. The high school, this is the science department. And here you can see, the boat says SS status quo is going down. So, they're excited to make change and, you know, leap into the 21st century and go forth and talk about each one of their goals. This also gives me the opportunity to check in and say, "Do they have a clear understanding of what the big picture goal is?" And it also gives me the, an opportunity to say, "Where do we need some professional development or some support or some coaching? Where are we at?" And then, high school art, Mr. Hedges was tenured this evening. They also, you know, all of the departments and all of the grade levels. So, we came together in this room and put all the posters up and did a gallery walk. So, each of the schools got to see each other's posters and then ask, ask questions and give feedback. So, it's not just a showcase, "Here's my poster." It's really kind of pushing these deep questions. Like, "I wonder, you know, how will you accomplish this?" Or, "How are you communicating that to students?" or et cetera. So, our next steps, lastly, are, you know, you saw on the plan the schools put when they're going to check in on their goals, but they also know that I'm going to make them check in on their goals. So, through teaching and learning leadership, which meets about six times a year, we check in on goals and again, give homework. Through our lead and learn, so our lead and learn consists of Superintendent Kelly, all of the principals, directors, and coordinators. We meet about monthly, and that's where we really review data and talk about benchmarks. And we also do book studies and other professional development there. And then, through the school-based PLC, they're working on looking at the different data and benchmarks. So, I just, it's all about reminding and that constant pushing for reminding, what are the goals, where are we at, what do we need to do next, what can the district do to support? So, as we move forward with our strategic planning, I just wanted to give the, a base of what all of the schools had done and the departments had done to get to this point. So, they're used to now establishing SMART goals and understanding, prioritizing root causes, all of those different pieces, and benchmarking it out.
Questions or comments? I guess my one question, Zina, would be, is, as you combine all these things, are you comfortable that, because when you look at some of the, you know, whether it's World's Best Workforce or some of the other things, there's some pretty specific things that they're looking for from us. Are you comfortable that even as you go this path, you'll be able to, to make sure that those, the, I'll call them highlights, they're not necessarily highlights, but those, those important items are taken care of?
Yep. So, for example, we just saw the Columbia Academy presentation. I always need a literacy goal, literacy SMART goal. And so, they already have that done and ready to go. It's not going to change from one report to the next. That's their goal and they know what it is. With our achievement and integration plan, they all have an equity goal, and that's not going to change. And so, I can pull from, from those already established goals. So, we tried to pull all of the different components together to cover. Of course, I still have to write all the compliance reports, all the details. But the goals are there, and I'm not asking them to create different goals. The goal's the goal, it's the goal, and that's what we're working on.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, that's very clever. I think that's great. I, just having been on the board now for a couple of years, I've learned all of the complexities of title programs, World's Best Workforce, things I had no, no idea about. And it's been, you know, it's confusing. And I can imagine it, it is for parents, it is for even educators to some degree. So, I love the more concise nature of this. How are teachers responding to this? Are they excited about streamlining this or where they at?
That's what I was excited about when we had people come back together and the principals brought their grade-level posters that the teachers had worked together and, and made them. And I was, you know, I sent out reminders and I was hoping that they would all come in and, and take it, you know, take it to heart. And I was pleasantly surprised, which is why I wanted to go through the slideshow and share with you.
Okay. Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up would be the information regarding resolution to combine precincts for special elections. Dawn is going to talk to us.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to do some really exciting details here in a new Minnesota state statute that requires districts to do a combined resolution to combine polling places yearly now. In the past, we've only had to do this once every so often. It would can stay on record with the NOKA County for as long as we wanted it to, until you wanted to rescind it. So, now they're requiring it to be done yearly. And we don't know always if we're going to have a special election or not. So, we are here today to present this information to you. It's quite simple. It's the same resolution that we've used in the past, pretty much. The only exception is that the requirement is that the combined polling place must be a regular polling place, which most Valley View and Highland do comply to that requirement.
Questions? So, just for clarification, so if somebody's watching, this is a statute's been changed that we have to do this resolution by December 31st every year.
Correct.
Irregardless of whether or not there's a special election coming up.
Correct.
It's just something we need to do and.
And if we don't have it in place and there happens to be a special election, we'd have to open all 13 polling places.
We wouldn't be able to collapse like we normally would.
No.
Okay. All right. And this will be coming back to us in the form of a resolution before the end of the year?
Resolution is in your packet tonight, and it will be back, yes, on the 12th.
Any questions or comments? Hey, thanks, Dawn.
Question? So, approximately how much would that save that we're doing? I mean, if we had to have a special election, that we would be doing it just in two places instead of 13?
Well, it would be mainly the labor, because we have to pay for election judges and required to have so many in each, each precinct. So, it would depend on how many they feel is necessary for the size of election it may be. You probably noticed that our last special election, we had a smaller judges there than we would at a general election, like a presidential election year, just because they expect more turnout. It's kind of like that. So, it's mainly the cost, because most of the places we use are either city-owned or school district-owned, so we don't have to pay rent or, you know, to use the facilities. But it would, we have to pay for the cost of the judges' labor.
So, this is a cost-saving?
Correct.
Step.
Good question. Anybody else? All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up would be our action items. We're moving on to A, under action items, 2017 audit. Christine and Carolyn.
Chairman Larkin, board members, and Superintendent Kelly. At the November 21st work session, Matt Mayer was here from Bergen KDV to present the details of our annual audit. And this evening, Carolyn Stetson is here also from Bergen KDV to go over the audit with you. And then, we have an action item requesting your approval.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, superintendent. Like to take a few minutes of your time to go through the results of the 2017 audit. Oh, and I'm clicking on the wrong thing here. The main reason that you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on your financial statements. That opinion is housed within the independent auditor's report. The opinion we are providing for you is what's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that you can receive, meaning we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of June 30th, 2017. In addition to looking at the numbers of the financial statements, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That requires us to consider internal controls as we go throughout our process. You do see one item there, lack of segregation of accounting duties. That is a very common item. Ninety-five to 100, 95% of our districts, I would say, do receive that. And we've talked through that, not, not a new item either. Because you receive over $750,000 of federal dollars, we also conducted an audit in accordance with uniform guidance. There were no items of note worthy for finding, or there were no findings in relation to this particular audit either. One final component of the audit is the legal compliance item. The Office of the State Auditor puts together seven checklists full of state statutes that we ask a lot of questions about. One minor housekeeping item that is listed there that we've discussed with management already. There we go. As far as kind of high-level looking at the general fund, this slide looks at what was budgeted for revenue expenditures, the planned increase in fund balance of about $661,000 for the year. And the bottom part just touches on what the variances were. And what I'll say at more of a high level is that those variances were less than a percentage point for both revenues and, and expenditures. And when you're talking about the size of budget that you are working with in a year, that is an outstanding accomplishment. So, great job. And in the end, fund balance increased by 1.1 million. We'll look at a slide in, in future here that kind of breaks that down. We're going to start looking at your pupil units. We begin with your resident ADMs. For 2017, that was an increase of about 33 in total. If we apply the weighting factors that you see here and also take into account open enrollment, we arrive at the PUN served. This is the amount that you are paid off of from the state, that $3,655. And you see an increase there for 2017 as well. Just kind of some additional ways to look at that. Then, the next slide that we have here looks at your general fund sources of revenue in total, as well as by category. In total, the general fund revenues increased about just under 3%. And really, all of the categories that you see here did contribute to that increase, most notably in the state sources, which increased because of the enrollment that we touched on earlier, as well as an increase in the formula allowance, which is the amount received per student of 2%. Just an additional chart looking at that. And we do have some information here for you for expenditures per ADM served. For 2017, you see a decrease there. That is the result of just purely the calculations. General fund expenditures actually decreased by just over 1%. And the ADM served increased, as we touched on earlier. So, just the mechanics of that calculation leads to the decrease we see there. This information does give us the ability to compare information to some state average information as well. And you do see that the numbers are above what the state average is. But again, when, when we're talking about that, that is an average. And the, the revenue that is collected by a district leads to what is being spent. And the revenues in our state are very much geared by the demographics and the needs of, of the students living within your district. So, that is the reasoning that you're seeing the difference there. This chart kind of pulls, pulls everything together for the general fund. We've touched on your revenues. We've touched on the expenditures, as well as the increase in that fund balance. Fund balance for the year ended just, just under 4 million at 3.9. Really, all of the categories that you see presented here experienced part of that increase. And we're going to focus mostly on that unassigned, because that is what is in line with what your fund balance policy is that you set for yourselves. That increased about $236,000 for the year. And that, one other way that, excuse me, the fund balance policy actually looks at your unrestricted. So, not just the unassigned, but everything that is not restricted within the categories that you see here. And your fund balance policy indicates that you would maintain that unrestricted amount to be somewhere between 6% and 12%. And you are for 2017 at 10.3%. And this slide shows you kind of where you have been and the increase that you were able to accomplish in 2017. Some information presented for your food service fund here as well. Increases both for expenditures and revenues and an increase in fund balance ending the year at just under $400,000. The increases that you see there really are related to enrollment and, and then the costs associated with, with the food associated with them. Community service fund is also included here. Revenue's increasing as well as expenditures, an increase in total fund balance and ending the year at about $540,000. Important thing to note here is that all of the categories of your community service fund are currently positive, which is not always the case. There are times that some particular programs don't fully support themselves. So, that's a great indication as well. Be happy to take any questions that you may have. You're going to see Matt's name on here, as he was the first person to speak with you. But be happy to take those questions, too.
Any questions or comments regarding the audit?
I have questions.
Absolutely.
Looking through the reports and after Matt's presentation, so, what you're looking at, and again, this is my, my first time on the board going through your audit. But, so you're looking at the audit in compliance with the federal programs to make sure that the dollars are being spent as the dollars are supposed to be spent, correct? But then, you're also looking at kind of those expenditures compared to state average, as well as kind of over the course of several years. I saw that, I think we went back to 2013. Now, are you looking and evaluating our current expenditures based on what historical spending has been in the past?
We, we do, and this is more of kind of a summary of, you know, what that trend analysis is. Where, where are you currently and where have you been in the past four years?
So, are you also then looking at just, you know, your judgment then is based on the overall financial health and then, as well as the compliance of the, the regulations for the, the funding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. One other question.
Please.
So, in addition, looking at kind of the, the one area with the, I've marked it here in a second. The lack of segregation of accounting duties. And I know that this has been something that has appeared in the past. And maybe this is for Director Carr. Is this something that we are continuing to explore and look at and how that we can focus on and what that, what that looks like going forward?
Right. Well, as Carolyn stated, any organization this size with the size of staff that we have, we probably will, will always have a segregation of duties finding in our audit. But we do review internal controls at, all the time and try to come up with different ways to segregate those duties. So, when the auditors are here, we, we ask them for recommendations and then also, just as we're working through our daily business.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments?
Yeah, so, based on the information you've presented to us here, you're summarizing, you're providing a summary of your judgment or evaluation of the district's financial health. Could you, how would you sum it up in a sentence or so? What evaluative, evaluative statement could you make about your judgment of the district's financial health?
What I would say is I believe the district is very conscientious of, of how dollars are spent, how budget is executed, all of those things. I mean, the, how you're within 1% of that budget is just a clear sign to me that there's a plan that's in place. There's a lot of work that goes into developing that budget. And then, the execution of it is also very, very close to what that original plan is. So, it's a collaborative effort.
Thank you.
Any questions or any other questions or comments? Just an observation or a statement that is, was presented there. I know the board, some of you are on the board at the time, some were not, but the. direction that was given to administration was to work on that 6% to 12%. And I think it was, if you see the numbers there, we were at about 8.3 even as of last year, so moved up to 10.3, which again was direction of the board. So I'd like to at least make note of that, that there's been a conscious effort to follow the direction of the board and work to provide a little more cushion there. So I think that certainly is noteworthy as well.
Speaks to that same.
I know we had an opportunity to ask Matt questions last week at our work session. And it was helpful to have him comment that that was a healthy place for us to be, because I asked, is this a healthy place to be? And he's like, he thought, yes. So.
Just curiosity question. KDV, how many audits a year do you guys do just for school districts?
Just for school districts, 50 to 60.
50 to 60, sorry.
Upwards of that probably.
Out there with a lot of different ones.
Yes, yeah.
Cool, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So we would need to, get to my motion for that. So, motion on the table, need a motion and a second would be to approve the audit as presented. So start with a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Natty Beech, sorry. Hall, a second. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next up would be the OPEB trust resolution of the Board of Directors.
Chair Larkin, school board members and Superintendent Kelly, this item was presented at the November 14th board meeting for informational item, and it's to approve the OPEB trust resolution of the Board of Directors' certificate of incumbency. And basically, this was done because of the change in finance and operations director, and this is to put Superintendent Kelly and myself as signers on this account with the OPEB trust.
Okay.
I'll move that forward.
Okay, motion to move that forward by Laura. Second. By Molly. And, I mean, I can read the resolution. I probably should at least highlight the resolution. It's, whereas the corporation's authorized to appoint Wells Fargo Bank as trustee, resolve that the following are authorized entity representatives and that holds Superintendent Kelly and Christine Carr on the signature lines. It's resolved that such authorized representatives may not delegate their authority. It's also resolved that Wells Fargo shall fully protect by relying upon this resolution and shall be indemnified and held harmless. It's also resolved that this resolution shall replace and supersede any prior resolutions on the subject in conflict herewith. And then it certifies, well, you get to certify it later and sign it, Natty, but, so that's the resolution. Any questions, comments, clarification, everybody's clear as to what we're doing?
Just a standard yes.
Yep, it's a signature deal, okay. Having no discussion or questions, this would be a resolution, so it'd be a roll call vote. Natty, please.
Almer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Hi, motion carries. Next up is the police liaison contract. Christine, you're busy tonight.
Right, yeah, just about done. Superintendent, or Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly and members of the board, the police liaison contract was also reviewed at the November 14th meeting as an informational item. And this is the annual contract that we have with the city of Columbia Heights to provide school resource officers at our schools. So we'd ask for approval for this contract this evening.
Okay, motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is new suspended and deleted courses.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, at a previous school board meeting, I presented a proposal for additional courses for the 2018-19 school year, suspension of courses, and then expansion and replication of the LEAP multi-grade classroom. So some of the additions, I believe you have them on your screen, include the Advanced Math Concepts honors course, Project Lead the Way, addition of robotics, a full-year English 12 course, an American Indian history elective course at the high school, Highlander Band, the various Anoka Ramsey Community College courses that we presented. And then because of the Advanced Math Concepts, we would suspend the geometry at middle school. And also because of the expanded English 12, we would suspend the Communication Arts at the high school. So I'm here to ask for the approval of the 2018-19 new and suspended courses.
Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Hall, second, thank you. Questions, discussion or comments?
All right, just a clarification. From one of the suspended courses, geometry will still be offered to students who would be ready for that by being moved to the high school?
Correct. So we have precedence for that in the past. Students who were several years ahead in that math, in the math curriculum, were able to come up to the high school and take the course. And we work the schedules out with the principals, the two principals, that if that is the case, to try and make it work in the schedule at a convenient time. So we've had those discussions about how to schedule that and how that would work. And we've been able to do that in the past.
That's good, we can still offer that opportunity in the, over at the academy. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. Are any courses that have been, and I don't know if this is the time when you do this, that have been suspended in the past, been considered to be reinstated? Would that appear on this as well?
Yep. So if they're suspended, what we do is we print out all of the courses that we have in the database and review them to see if that's something that is never going to come back due to a variety of reasons, standards, changes in statutes or whatnot. And we'll oftentimes put those up for deleted courses. The suspended courses, we hold there just in case we want to offer them again. And that's how it works. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, questions or comments, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zena. Next up is our board book renewal.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this is our annual renewal of board book, the software that we use to create our board packets and, which makes it easier for us, spend a lot less time on creating the board packets, makes it easier for us to change as changes come in late, and it also saves on time and effort and copying cost. So, in the bottom of the motion, to renew the district's board membership for the calendar year, December 1st, 2017 to November 30th, 2018, for the total of $2,100. That's the motion before you, and we recommend moving forward with that and making no changes for the next calendar year.
Start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Oh, Lauren got you. Questions, comments or discussion?
We still think this is the best option overall, correct?
Yeah, the Minnesota School Board Association, we get this pricing through them, so there's a lot of school districts across the state that use it because it is a very cost-effective method.
This platform, it also stores the packets, is that correct?
Yes.
Because I've looked back.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Anyone else? I just, for clarification, in the paperwork in front of us, above it, it said 2,000, but it's 2,100.
Yes, the background has the wrong number, but in the motion, it is correct. It is 2,100.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
No, that's all right. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the motion is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next up would be the approval of school board organizational meeting procedures.
Chair Larkin and members of the board, it's, when it gets to be January, it's that time of year by statute that the board has an organizational meeting. And in order to have that, the standard practice of the board is to have some, establish some ground rules in advance. And we went over this at the work-study session. The ground rules we have used are Robert's Rules of Order that were revised with the board, with Karen Keppel in 2011. And then the first Monday in January, as prepared by the Minnesota School Boards Association, there were only two changes to that document this year, and that was in the areas of seating newly-elected school board members and filling unexpected terms. And so the governance question tonight is moving approval of these procedures for your organizational meeting in January.
Motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Thank you. Discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Last action item is building capacity. And Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I think that you've seen by the Columbia Academy report tonight that we are beyond capacity at Columbia Academy. The capacity really, over the years of Columbia Academy, is about 700. We've put in special programs over the years. So when the building was originally established, please remember that it went from two junior highs to one middle school. And so we are at capacity and then some. And when Principal Burca says that he is looking for lockers, looking for space, looking for places for programs, he means it. We are, we have to stop at some point. And so as discussed at the school board work-study session, administration is really making the recommendation to the board. So the governance question is that we would like to close Columbia Academy to non-resident enrollment, open enrollment applications effective immediately because the building is exceeding capacity and until further notice.
Motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Questions, comments or discussion?
I have a question. I know we talked a little bit about this at our work session, but we feel that closing now to open enrollment with the numbers that are coming into the academy in the future, that we feel like we're still at a good place for enrollment to continue the same services and programs that we're currently providing.
Yes, we do. What we've seen actually is a 50, the Columbia Academy has held at least 50 students each year beyond its capacity for the last two years. And then going into this year, it looks the same. And so we've been looking, discussing this really for three years, and we're at a high water point, so we believe that we will hold what we have. There will be some mobility because people move and change, and they will move out of the district, but people are also moving into the district. So we believe that we can make this. And we've talked to Director Carr and without putting the district at financial risk, so we think we're in a sturdy place. Thank you.
And our enrollment in the elementary levels are sturdy as well.
They are sturdy. We have big classes coming in, in fourth and fifth grade. So we know that we have, if all things are equal and everyone comes to the middle school, we have, we're going to be at capacity for the next couple of years.
And if anything changes, we could always open enrollment again.
Exactly. If we felt that there was a recommendation to open, just like we've done that for grade level sometimes, we've closed a grade level, we would bring it back to the board. But because we're approaching the January open enrollment for other students, we feel it would be fair to do this now so that people know when they're making their plans for this year and for next year, then in all probability, the building will remain closed for the next school year.
I have another question. So then, again, for students who are currently non-resident students who are attending our elementary schools, are they able to attend Columbia Academy?
Yes, that's a very good question. Once they open enroll as our students, they are our students until they graduate or leave.
Thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions, comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Board topics, anybody have anything for board topics? Question before you run out the door there, Principal Burca, the play, the dates of the middle school play?
14, 15, 16, 17, I think.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Not this weekend, but next weekend coming up.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I was going to give them a chance, but.
Yeah, I believe it's Thursday, Thursday, Friday, it's all on my calendar here, Saturday, Sunday.
Sunday matinee.
Sunday matinee at 2:00, otherwise at 7:00 o'clock.
Okay, very good. At the, from outside.
At the POC, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Any other board topics, since I just made that one up? Hearing none, we are going to adjourn this meeting at 8:47. Thanks, everybody.